I'd like to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting concurrently with the Appropriations Committee meeting. Great.
Yeah. Yeah, good luck with that.
We've been talking for that.
There's a lot on the agenda tonight. Denver may have to...
Suck it up.
Yeah. Where are we going first, Nick?
What I did was I made packets. I know you have the budgets. I made packets for basis of discussion because there's more than a few budgets that are going to need changes and decisions from the board. So if you want to follow along, is there any orders?
So what you're handing out, are they any different than what we have there?
They're going to be maybe slightly different, but nothing significant. But what I'm saying is there are questions in here as we go along...
Yep.
...that the board needs to answer. So what I did was I said, rather than work off of that, let's work off of these for now.
Okay.
And I'm going to have to give you revised budgets.
Okay.
In two or three cases anyway.
Okay.
So this, each one of these is one packet to work from.
Yep, okay.
So Nick, are you talking about you'll have to give us revised budgets beyond the ones you're handing out now?
Are these the revised budgets that you were referring to?
Beyond the ones that I'm handing out. So this is interim step.
So it's still a preliminary?
Right. The board has reviewed most of, well, actually, the board's reviewed all of the budgets, but there are some questions that still need to be answered. So I just thought working from clean paper would probably be the best way to go at this point. So the first one I have in the packet is animal control. And with animal control, just to point out, here's one of the little differences that may not be on the other sheet there. You see the shaded area 400 and 1,500 closing stipends. Those had, well, the 400 was moved and the stipend may not have been reflected on the packet that you have again. I'm not entirely certain. But the overall, as you look, so up top would be the more contractual in a sense, although the animal control's not too contract. And then down below, you can see the 58, 68 is a different number. So here with the animal control, the big differences, one of the things that the board has taken a vote on is in accordance with conversations that have gone on for a year or two. And then with the Appropriations Committee, if you look onto the supplemental page, the board voted to approve that supplemental. So what I expect to submit to the Appropriations Committee would be a revised budget showing that as part of Page One. And this reflects, again, an increase in stipend, as noted $35 a day, plus a differential for holiday coverage on all of the holidays.
So you mirrored the police contract, potentially. Provisions of the police contract you mirrored with the dog officer. Well, police and fire get additional money for holidays and so forth like that. And there's a closing allowance. So you mirrored much of the same language?
We may have, but we never, that was not, never came up. That wasn't part of our thought process. The thought process was strictly talking about the dog officer and the fact that he's effectively on duty 24/7 and is getting $50 a day for it. So we wanted to increase that and we also wanted for holidays once again. If you're at home on Thanksgiving and your family's there and you can't, for lack of a better word, enjoy yourself to an extent you might want to because you may get a cold day at night. So, but we, I, to be honest with you, that did not come into the conversation at all as far as the police.
For retirement purposes, where, what classification does a dog officer fall under for retirement? Are they the same as police, fire corrections?
It's my understanding that the position itself is just a stipended position and is not participant in Handen County Retirement. I believe it's an OBR type of situation.
If I remember correctly, it was tied to the increased revenue, I mean, increased, there was some increased revenues.
That's right.
Yes.
That's correct.
So this is round figures of 33% increase in the budget, which is, you know, significant and obviously something that I've questioned on town meeting for. You folks would have to kind of justify. But essentially, the revenues that you anticipate will cover the increases, the increase in revenue will increase, will cover these increases?
I believe, and, yeah, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we were taking, it was $30,000, that's the figure that sits in my head. That was shipped out of the dog officer, you know, the animal control account into the general fund. So in the past, the past year or two. So obviously, the revenue has been there. The revenue increase has been there. We said something that wasn't done previously. So obviously, trying to fund this from within, if you will, as opposed to, you know, from revenue sources that he generates. And he's done a tremendous job, obviously, bringing this position into a proactive position instead of just chasing, you know.
But the income is still going to the general fund?
Well, what we're trying to do is keep some of it in for the increased salaries.
And how do we go about doing that?
So currently, the animal control, it's part of the revolving fund.
Okay. So they do have a revolving?
And so, yes.
Okay.
And so the past few years at town meeting, they have appropriated to move some of that revenue back into the general fund to replenish it. And the 30,000 figure is correct. It's close enough.
Okay.
It was actually a little more than that, but, so yes.
Okay. Just a quick question from ignorance. Stipend, it says stipend for animal inspections. Does the dog officer actually perform animal inspections?
Yes. The, well, as the animal control officer, he is also the inspector of animals. Our alternate animal control officer is not currently certified for that. But as part of those duties periodically, I believe it's twice a year, if not four times a year, he goes and inspects farms and checks on livestock and other animals of that nature.
Okay.
So obviously, you guys voted to support this. You feel confident this is...
Worthwhile?
What's that?
Worthwhile?
Worthwhile, yeah. I was trying to come up with an animal, but I couldn't.
Animal. Something we could write into town meeting, for example?
Yeah. Okay. Health?
The next one is Board of Health. And what I would point out, excuse me. So the Board of Health budget as presented shows no increase, well, is showing some increases here. And the members are a little bit all over the place. You see in the side column, there's calculations. And really, the main question here, and the board is still discussing this matter, is whether or not and what to do about the health agent position and how to go about addressing it. As some board, committee members may know, it's been a struggle to maintain a consistency with that position over the last year, year and a half. At the time that this was written, this was, you know, an example to talk about where we are with this. And even with the current funding, at that time, if there were a 19-hour position at $22 an hour, there would still be a need for 63, 58. And that's why that got taken up from other purchase services to cover that amount. The board has had other discussions since this time and indeed has hired somebody at a 19-hour a week, or rather, 18 hours a week, for a total of two days a week coverage at $30 an hour. And so if, obviously, if the board is looking to keep that as the standard or even expand the hours, the costs are going to go up. And just a rough calculation on the next page shows that, you know, $30 an hour at a full-time would be just under 60, you know, just under $59,000 for the year, plus benefits and so forth. So this is, as I mentioned, it's a question for the board. I don't have final direction as to what to present. And that's really the big driver for this, for this budget. The rest, based on what I'm looking at, the rest of, for the expense side of it, looks like it would be able to hold. But with the exception of, depending on if, what the board wanted to do with mileage, if this were a full-time position, the mileage would likely have to be increased. And the other question, although the board has not had discussion about it as of late, would be whether or not the board wanted to establish a nuisance property cleanup program, which is why that $5,000 is on the supplemental. But I have a few questions, and the board has been working on it and discussing it. I just don't have direction.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Denver?
Can I state the obvious? We're five weeks away from the annual budget hearing. You know, our sister communities surrounding us have a full-time health agent. Log Meadow has had one, I know as a fact, since 1984. You know, I know Wilbraham, I think is pretty sure has one, Ludlow has one. And we're in the 21st century and we are struggling, I listened to you struggle, on keeping them because we don't pay enough and we don't have a full-time person. But, I mean, just for our work, we need an answer fairly quickly. We're going to put it into the budget and submit it. So I would graciously or appreciably request that an answer be made fairly quickly.
I would almost add to that that it's almost too late. I mean, we're, we're three weeks at this point away from the preliminary warrant being with a reminder. And like you said, we're about three weeks away from our public budget hearing. And we're kind of getting down to the wire here. It's, well, it's getting tough to start introducing whole new, large expenditure items at this stage of the game. But, but if the board feels strong, I mean, we'll work with the board to see what we can, what we can do. I think we're going to have, I know we're going to have, before we're done here tonight, some broader conversation on the entire budget as a follow-up to our last meeting. So you can take that information back with you when you make your decisions on this, this stuff.
Okay. Any questions on health?
I have one question, Nick. On the $5,000, it's for nuisance property.
Yes.
And you had that in your FY '16 budget. I thought that was all taken care of last year. There was only one property remaining that needed any attention. Why do we have 5,000 in the budget for FY '16?
It's in the supplemental.
I understand that.
Okay.
Again, this is a matter that the board hasn't taken up as of late. But typically, we are, well, we're just entering now, hopefully, I guess, hopefully mud season. And once that starts happening, we start getting many phone calls about people who aren't doing the right thing by their properties. And that tends to continue right on through the summer. So the board's thought, prior to my making this budget, and the reason I put it in there was that there was a discussion about perhaps establishing a fund that would, in essence, pay for any cleanups that we had to pay for and then allow for us to put a municipal liens charge on there to try to replenish it.
Eric, I just have a, this may be a restatement of what we just covered, but I'm a little thick. The January 15 budget, that was submitted for the health department, is the exact same as what you just submitted today. So what is it that you need to review, whether or not the board supports the supplemental budget? Because that was the supplemental budget that was presented or submitted in January as well.
I'm sorry to cause any confusion. I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same paper for this evening. But the board, I still do need to have from the board direction as to whether or not it's a supplemental that they may pursue.
Right. So it hasn't changed?
It hasn't changed.
You just have to make your decision whether you're going to be supportive of it.
This hasn't changed. However, if you look, and once again, they correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at this budget item, it's a, the increase in the salaries for a person of $22 an hour. We obviously, especially Selectman Harmon, went out to the marketplace and found out you're not getting anybody for $22 an hour. So the person that we got, who was actually a retiree and going to work 18 hours, was happy with $30, even though the norm is 32, depending on where you go. So you look and you see that increase is based on $22 an hour. But underneath, you know, as Nick had put, and this is sort of what we're trying, hopefully gearing towards, is it's my recommendation that the health agent position be expanded to full-time with a starting salary of approximately 58, 950, plus benefits, and this will equate to an hourly rate of $30 an hour. So that's in a perfect world what we'd like to get because obviously, it's a big increase. But when you think about, and I'm stealing Bill's thunder here, but when you think about it, we get so many restaurants, we get so many stars, we've got so many schools, pools. The increase in this, when you think about a lawsuit, some kid gets hurt or gets sick or something, or a bunch of kids get sick in the school or something like that to the town, this is peanuts compared to what, you know, what we could be, what we could be responsible for should something happen. And also, you know, it would allow a full-time position at a comparable wage or competitive wage would allow the health agent to be proactive. And instead of, she doesn't work for the fire department, but all she does is put out fires in a figurative, literal way now. And it'd be nice to have he or she be able to go out and actually say, I'm going to these restaurants this day, these restaurants this day, you know, be proactive. And that way, you can nip any problems in the bud. And the same thing with, like I said, with the schools. So that's ultimately what we're looking for. And I think that's what we'll probably be coming back, you know, at some point with, you know. But just to give you an idea.
Because I've been through five health agents in eight months I've been here. And the one we have now is also putting in for somewhere closer to where she lives up in Grafton. And she travels an hour and a half down, hour and a half back. I mean, we knew when we hired her, she's not going to stay. So she's more or less helping us out until we, you know, until the town meeting, see if we can do something. But the salary paid between 30 and 35 dollars for the credentials you have to have for the job. So what we did, we started at the low end of the totem pole to see if we could draw someone there. So, you know, myself, I think it's a priority one because I'm telling you right now, I go out with them. We have places we haven't looked at in 10 years. And like Paul said, we're going to have a lawsuit on our hands, but we don't do what we're supposed to be doing on this job. And alls we can do with these people we've had is just put fires out. We go from this one to that one. We can't go out and get a schedule going and inspect places like we're supposed to be doing, you know?
All right, next, yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't care, but I'm just telling you, I'm trying to fight this because I do care that something could happen down the road. And we're going to be in a lot of trouble if we don't do what we're supposed to be doing with this, this job. Because like I say, there's places that haven't even been inspected in years that we've been in. And, you know, having a part-time person like this, I get called out at my house 6:00 in the morning for fires here, fires there. You know, I'm not qualified to do it, but the person lives out of town, then we work two days a week. They can't come in, so I have to go out and do what I have to do. Hopefully, I'm doing the right thing. But that's the way it's been for the last eight months that I've been there. So, you know, it's up to you guys what you want to do, or up to the town what they want to do.
Okay. Oh, it's keep going. Keep going, Nick.
All right. So the next, next budget then, Board of Selectmen. So similar, there are some unanswered questions here, although they're more related towards negotiations. The salaries and, you know, all of those personnel expenses are based on contractual increases that I know about. And there are, there are three people in the Board of Selectmen's office, two, rather, excuse me, two who are part of the Town Employees Union. And negotiations for that are going to commence soon. So it's not likely that that figure will be known before town meeting, which will affect not only the Board of Selectmen's budget, but as you know, several in town hall. Look at an overall 1% of the expenses. Making, you know, making some adjustments based on what I saw for trends in the, you know, spending in the past.
Supplemental is...
Supplemental. The biggest, let's see, the biggest thing in the supplemental up top is I put a placeholder in. This is no way any kind of a solid indication or anything that the board has said, but there is a contractual matter that's outstanding that the board, you know, I just put a number in there.
What is that current salary?
$51,000 or so, $51,000, $52,000.
If you'd like to know what a private company pays for a similar position, I'd be happy to give you those numbers.
I'll take them and give them, share them with the board.
Sure it's not lower?
It is lower.
Is it?
Here's my other question, and I've said this to you a few times. So benefit administrator, wages are part of your benefits. Why can't you use this person to do some of your salary surveys on positions?
Use this person for what, though?
To do the research on the salaries for the different, I mean, in the meantime, until you work on your HR administrator. Why can't that person call 10 communities and get the job descriptions and get the salary, you know, the steps and all that stuff and do charts for you? Do measurements? I mean, it's...
Because she's so bummed with work and the updates and it, well, you can shake your head no, but I...
No, I'm not shaking my head no.
I go in there 6, 7 o'clock at night and she's working in there. She comes in off of vacation, which I'm totally against. If you go to vacation, you should take it. But she's coming in on a vacation to do work because what happened with her, she was in the union and past selectmen took her job and reclassified her. Now she's not a head of a department and she's not a union. She's like a lost soul.
When did they do that?
You know, when Jimmy Driscoll and Bill Aminow were here. So what's happening now, she has, like I said, she's a lost survivor. She's like by herself. She has, she has nobody to bargain for, nobody to lead us through that. And so when she's out, because nobody knows that job, when she's out, that work is there when she gets back to town. If we close for snow days, I mean, you know, she's just bummed with work. And, you know, it's a shame that a person has to come in on their vacation to do any work, you know? I mean, when you're on vacation, you should get vacation.
Okay. Thank you.
You know? But I mean, I've been monitoring her more to see exactly what goes on. I mean, she does a lot of human resource work beside. She's, she's got to do all the updates on all these, you know, health programs that are changing with Obamacare and all the other stuff to get it through. But I got to say, she does an excellent job, though, she does.
She does. She does an excellent job.
And what we're trying to do is get like this tax thing, and I got a lady in there to try to help her out, just to get organized on some things or file. But we had to get someone that knows a little bit about what's going on. So that's where we're at right now.
Is the 5% an arbitrary number?
I believe you said it was a placeholder.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It is. Again, nothing the Board of Selectmen has told me to put in there. It's a number I just...
And just in passing...
A reminder, it catches your eye.
Yeah. And I guess my sentiment is I wouldn't be opposed to a salary increase for this individual that would be commensurate with others in the town hall. But I don't know that it should be any more than those in the town hall. That's why I asked if 5% was a... So I guess what I'm saying is when you settle collective bargaining agreements, if there are those that fall through the cracks, I think was how you put it...
Yeah, exactly.
That you want to give them the same raises. I can't imagine you'd get a lot of pushback from us.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So she has a contract?
She has a contract, yeah.
Oh, she does have a contract?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and she's got to negotiate along with everyone else?
Which we're in the process of doing.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, the way you had spoke, I thought you referred to it as non-contractual.
No, no, she's...
Okay.
Like I said, it's one of those weird positions where she's not a department head, she's contractual. If she was in the union, she probably would be making at least what she's making now. So, regardless of your comment about the private, about private sector.
So she's contractual but not department head?
Correct.
That's where she's the lost soul.
That's what Billy said, she's sort of a, yeah, yeah. How many of those do you have? I think one. Thank God. We're going to, yeah, that's enough. She does do a nice job. She actually does do a very good job. Department head, she has a half-time employee under her, so...
So the one question, the one on the supplemental I had to question on was, it's a small amount, $1,300 for the Board of Selectmen members to attend the MMA Annual Meeting and Trade Show in Boston. You guys currently don't attend?
Well, the board, the board does, well, was able to attend this year. But there was, it was for funding for, we use funding for travel through the Board of Health budget and attending as Board of Health, Board of Selectmen. So we didn't have anything set up in the Board of Selectmen budget. The Board of Health budget, frankly, we have had such inconsistent...
Employees.
...with employees that we had a little bit, you know, we had that money to utilize that way. But that's not, that's really not the way that I prefer to have it in the budget.
So would anybody here have an objection if, when they revise, if you just put it in your main budget?
Just put it in there?
Yeah. That's...
Yeah, so you got to do it.
You guys, I mean, the information you bring back from there will make that money back tenfold. So, I mean, I just, yeah, absolutely. I can't believe it's never been part of the budget, so...
It has. It has. It was taken out.
Oh, okay.
Last year.
Okay. I mean, it's small money for what you get out of that, yeah. Okay. Any other questions on Plutman's budget?
Next, I have legal services. And just in the shaded areas, I put in 2% increases for labor and labor council and related expenses. I think with free contracts that are being worked on right now, collective bargaining, that, you know, it's hopefully 2% will do it. I can tell you that if you took a look at the year-to-date, and at the moment, we seem to be tracking okay for the rest of the year, keeping our fingers crossed with that. But again, it will be, this spring, there's going to be three separate negotiations going on, so that could, that trajectory could change quickly.
So let me ask if the contractual, contractual negotiations kind of occur over two fiscal years? In other words, if they're not settled by the end of this fiscal year, do you think you'll be okay or you think you'll be...
That's the question I can't answer. I look at, I look at where we are right now, and we could very well be okay through the end of this fiscal year. But if it gets stalled and it looks like it's going to be, you know, really take a lot more sessions in the next fiscal year, I just don't have that answer for you right now, and especially since we're...
Well, I probably worded my whole question really crazy. If the bulk of the negotiations are going to take place during the current fiscal year, why would we need an increase in next fiscal year's money?
I don't know that they will.
Oh, okay. Okay.
One of the, for example, we've, well, it just started with one of the unions. Another one's been a little bit further along. And another one just gave notice that they want to start. So I, that one in particular may not do anything until well-passed. We'll see.
Okay.
We'll be hopeful.
Positive energy.
Positive that it will get done.
Positive energy that...
Are the contracts all up at the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a good possibility that you won't have completed contracts by July 1st?
We'd like to. We've got...
We'd like to.
We did, yeah, because we did put, and we did take the clause that the TPW had in their contract about the fact that it goes past July 1st, and it's our... in their contract about the fact that if it goes past July 1st, and it's our fault that it goes past July 1st, that they can be retroactive, you know, to the beginning of the year, whereas if it's their fault, they can't, they won't be retroactive till the beginning of the year. So I think it behooves them and us to get it done by June 30th, so, yeah.
It's a subjective term. Your fault or our fault?
Well, the person who drags their feet, how about that? And just in passing, I mean, Russ, you may be able to answer this, because I'm trying to sort of stoke the fires for something else that's going to come up at some point. Look at these budget items and be someone who was in this, in this field before. Do you know, because I've always been curious about this, and I figure you're the best person to ask maybe, how, how would an HR person affect this, this, not so much the top figure, not the appointed salary, but the professional, technical, you think, you think that would dent it and, you know, because now if we have an issue, we're calling in someone from the labor, labor force, labor attorney force.
Is that part of, so on those special issues, is that part of the retainer or not part of the retainer?
I don't know.
I mean, that's really what, you need to look at their contract that you have. Are they just on retainer just for labor negotiations, or are they on retainer for everything? And if they're not on for everything, what's their hourly rate for the extra that you have them doing? And that's where you save the money with an HR director who can do the extra and the day-to-day stuff that now you might be calling Labor Council to do when you can actually have an HR person do it. And some, if you have a good HR person, some of the preliminary negotiations and the research on, you know, salaries and other benefits, that can all be done by your HR person, so.
The other aspect you see is through the development and implementation of, and oversight of policy, you have far less, as time goes on, far less legal issues to come up.
Right.
Yeah, things like harassment, you know, the grievances and, you know, those things. If you have a quality HR person, those grievances can be handled, you know...
Right in-house.
Right in-house, and you don't have to hire outside companies to do that. And so, and it's just like anything else, you, you get what you pay for on the quality of the HR person, yeah, so.
I just had a question here.
Go ahead.
FY14, we have seventy, we have seventy-two thousand expended in this category, professional tech legal, which is the Labor Council. Is that labor for negotiations plus, council for negotiations plus council for grievances and those kinds of things?
Yeah.
So is that, I mean, because the next year, this fiscal year, we're at sixty-two, and we have a lot of contracts up and negotiations taking place, and next year at sixty-two or sixty-three. So did we have just a, an extraordinary number of one-off issues come up that didn't work part of negotiations?
One, one in particular, that was, is, I believe that a number of those expenses were related to a mediation that came about through a contract, and that was, you know, the number of meetings there. It also covers things like civil service actions, and we had a number of court dates, if you will, with that. So, yes, that is reflected as more activity.
And you don't anticipate something like that reoccurring, thus we're back down to the sixty-two, sixty-three?
It's difficult to say, yeah.
As of now, we have a bit of a lull?
If the, if the committee recalls, it was maybe four years ago, five years ago, that looking at it as we all do every year, and the committee and the Board had suggested maybe going up to around ninety-eight or so to be sort of a in-the-middle amount, but it is a little difficult to predict.
And I mean, we should just kind of remember that everyone but Sam was on the Operations Committee when we tried two years in a row to go to town meeting and get an HR director, and each time failed.
I mean, we had, obviously, we had one that was a consultant, but that didn't fly after...
Don't go there. Don't go there on that one.
Yeah.
Don't go there on that one.
And if memory serves me right, they, for FY14, the additional funding, I think it was nine thousand something, that was done with a reserve fund transfer, wasn't it? I recall visiting that same issue, Jim. What you just asked, I remember visiting that issue then at that time.
I don't remember if it was, it likely was.
Yeah. You recall that, Russ? Yeah, I think it was a reserve fund transfer.
Okay.
Next, trash collection. So the, the number in here reflects a two percent, and that is really, well, first, let me just start by explaining that the Board of Selectmen has negotiated two contracts relative to trash pickup this year alone. Recall, last year, they renegotiated or negotiated a contract with Covanta. They realized a very great savings, going down from eighty-seven a ton to sixty-one a ton with our trash disposal at the facility in Springfield. That will go up to sixty-two dollars a ton this year, still, you know, far better than we were doing. The Board first negotiated and accepted a contract proposal from the Springfield MRF, which is the materials recycling facility down in Bernie Ave. The town will be continuing its relationship where we will be able to have our hauler bring the recycling down there with no charge to the town. The downside is that the commodities for plastic and other recyclables is not as hot as it was in, say, two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. So for us, it means probably getting, instead of like forty thousand or so a year as return on that, we're probably going to be getting about twenty thousand a year, based on our history. But we're still, we're not paying for it, and still a pretty, pretty good deal with the town. The other bigger, more important, well, more costly part of this is the trash hauler contract. Currently, Republic Services is our hauler. Their contract for five years expires June 30th. The Board entertained going out to bid with Long Meadow. However, an offer came in from Republic Services that the Board felt was in the best interests of the town, so that it is still undergoing negotiations. Lawyers are going back and forth on the details, but a report to the Board that Jim Donahue today told me that he's seen the final draft and he's satisfied. So we're getting, we're getting close, maybe by Tuesday. Something will be there. The first year of the contract does have an increase of approximately two-point-six percent. It's about fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand above the actual dollar value, six-oh-one, six-oh-one, six-oh-one-five, let's call it, for the first year, just on the hauling aspect. The, but there's, it's actually a net lower than two-eight or two-six because there's a variable component where we have all of our containers at the different municipal buildings, dumpsters, wheeled carts, those types of things. We have to pay Republic a fee for the disposals on those so they can be variable, but what they've done is they've held the cost for the first year of the contract on those, so that keeps the, the overall cost relative, like I said, below a two-six or two-five. The rest of the contract does call for a three percent increase of each of the next four years of the contract, and the contract also has a two-year option at the town's discretion at the end of the five years. Recall that trash service is not something subject to 30D, so this is why the Board could go and sign this kind of deal. And one other very good provision that the Board was able to get and keep in there too was that we currently enjoy a seventy-five-hundred-dollar value for community outreach funds, which the Board can dispose of as it sees fit through the community, which in turn pays for, has paid for our participation in the annual household hazardous waste day, and also allows for nice things like scholarships and several other things that the Board will be pleased to make awards to later this spring. So that's what's going on with the trash for this year.
Plus we'll get a hundred bins for free.
Plus we're getting, that's exactly right. We'll be getting a hundred blue bins a year for free.
Thank you, God. I told you to ask.
It was great. It was great.
So the overall cost of, to the taxpayer for our collection and disposal is roughly just shy of a million dollars a year?
It runs, it's been running just under nine hundred or so.
Well, based on, okay, we can expect a shy of a million dollars next fiscal year, I guess, based upon the submittal here.
Yes.
So I'm not throwing this out for this year, but one of the things that I think we all have to start thinking about, as we've talked about the budget, and we're going to talk about the overall budget, big picture, again, this evening, and we're looking at all the staff that we all feel the need to add in town, but yet we're not looking at any ways to fund it. And this is one area that the Board has some flexibility. So have you ever considered or thought about a fee-based or partial fee-based service?
Well, recall that, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I mean, recall that the town does operate under a modified pay-as-you-throw program whereby the first container, I mean, you're a resident, you know, the first container or first bag...
Right.
Is part of the tax base, and then anything beyond that, you have to pay for with the town bags, which still, even though we've not gone up in price, still covers what, you know, that cost of the disposal at the sixty-one dollars a ton is down at Covanta. So would the town ever, if you're asking the Board now, would the town want to adopt a full pay-as-you-throw where your first bags costs you that amount? I, I think, I don't know if the Boards had that discussion.
Well, there's, there's a variety of ways to do it. It doesn't have to be a, a bag fee, or it can be a, you know, an additional fee, an annual fee. There's, there's a variety of ways to do it. All I'm saying, all I'm suggesting is that there's a lot of growth being suggested here in the, in the town budget, but no concepts on funding that. And it just continues to pile up on the tax rate. And all I'm suggesting is that we really need to start, none of them are lovely, none of them, do I want to pay an extra fee? No, of course not. But I also understand if we need these services in town, it's going to cost us somewhere. So I think we need to start examining some of those areas where we can, where we can look at the funding. Here's one area that I, I think the Board might want, might do well to look at, not this year, it's too late this year for us to start for next year, but to start looking at that and thinking of some of the other options, and if we start looking into it now, you've kind of got a year for some investigation and that sort of stuff.
It'll take five years to get used to.
Yeah, yeah. But I do, I mean, all I'm suggesting is that none of these growths that are being suggested are bad. They're all, I think, many of them might, we've had these conversations before, are badly needed in our community. But I think we need to think of ways to fund them too. So that's all I'm suggesting.
So some other communities have gone to single-stream recycling. Do you know whether they're making more, they're, they're having more participation, less participation, and therefore we're putting, we're getting paid more for the recycling that we get paid for? Do you know how that's trending or not trending?
I know that it's, I, I don't have something to say one way or another. I haven't heard great, I haven't heard bad. I haven't heard of a success story where some community saw not necessarily the increase in revenue stream from, from that program, but the cost avoidance is really where you make out. It is more of a, the thing that I've heard is it's more of a convenience factor for people, where they don't have to sort. But I, I can't tell you if it translates into dollars.
We have people acclimated right now to separating their cans and stuff, so, because they've been doing it for so long, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what our participation rate is. Just, is there a way to increase our participation?
I would guess...
Curious.
I mean, I wouldn't know, but I would guess, you know, driving down the road, that it's probably pretty good in the town. You see a fair amount of recycling though.
Good.
You know, when you're driving to work in the morning and everybody's got their, their stuff out there, it just, it looks to me like there's a pretty good participation. But, no, that's not very scientific, Russ.
Well, it depends on how long...
That's not very scientific.
It depends on how long your trip is to work.
Look, that's the trash budget. Next I have in mind here is the emergency preparedness budget.
Oh, what happened to Veteran Services?
We can go to Veteran Services?
Veteran Services would have been increasing. Governor's budget would have been increasing, so this is...
Veteran Services, this one, we're initially, back when I put this together, thirty-two thousand seemed to be a reasonable estimate about what our assessment would be for our participation. Recall, we were part of the Eastern Hampden Town Veteran Service District in Bonnance. What Selectment Thorpe recently, well, in early February, went to a meeting where they talked about the assessments, and she reported back to the Board that our assessment was going to be indeed thirty-three thousand, three-twenty-seven. That would be our share. And whether or not there's any wiggle room in there, we're not sure at this point.
I don't think so. It pretty much is what it is. The increase is due to another town dropping out of the unit, and so we do pay a big portion of it. And so our share went up a little bit larger than everybody else's, and that's what the number is. But what I did speak to them about is having more representation here, since we're paying with the Board's support. We felt that we needed more representation here in the town on a consistent basis, and so they did agree to be here on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a three-hour spend. And if they hadn't agreed, they had the Board's permission to say, well, then maybe we're going to look for our own.
Can you refresh how many towns?
So, right now, there, there are four members.
Okay.
Right, and what we have, just a rough breakdown of the numbers, is that for the budget for the FY16, for the district, total budget's fifty-nine thousand, eight-thirty-three, and East Long Meadow's assessment is fifty-five point seven percent of that, so it's thirty-three, three-twenty-six. The other towns are Munson, Hampden, and Wales. And the way that the district calculates is it looks at the equalized value and determines what your percentage would be amongst all the five towns, and then assesses you that way.
The four towns.
The four, four towns.
It was five.
I'm sorry, what does equalized value mean?
You look at the property value of the town.
For Veterans Services?
Well, it's a way, instead of saying per capita, they look at the equalized value of...
They wouldn't just figure out how many veterans per town and do it that way?
No.
And population is included in this too, correct? In terms of that we have to have X amount of staffing for, wasn't there a sixteen thousand or something?
Oh, the, right, yeah, the, what happened is the state, some years ago now, maybe eight or so, said that for any community that had a part-time veteran service officer, when that officer retired, the town would need to go and either hire somebody on their own or enter into a district situation, depending, yes, in part on your population. And so this is what East Long Meadow chose to do.
Do you think we're getting a bang for our buck? Do we know how many veterans we have, and are we serving them well?
Well, I don't know exactly what the number is for the amount of veterans that we have in town, but going through the warrants every week, I do see that they are getting their services. I think by increasing the hours here and having a set day and time that they're going to be here, I think there may be more, more of an increase of a participation to look out for services from them. I think it was kind of hard before, he had a number on the, on the door, and you were to call him when you needed the services, and I, I think...
No consistency.
Well, it was consistent if you called them, he would come, but I think it's, I think it'll be beneficial for us to have him here on-site for those Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we do supply him with a little office there, so it's, it's always been there, and Carolyn's been very open to that. So I think that's going to be beneficial for our veterans, and we'll watch the numbers and see what happens.
Nick, should we just change the number to thirty-three, three-twenty-seven then?
Yes, but I, I will, you know, I'll resubmit that to the committee as well.
Yeah, that's kind of a contractual type thing. There's not a whole lot of choice there, so.
That's it, the Veterans Budget, and the next one is now, emergency preparedness? The overall figure on emergency preparedness for that budget is eleven dollars more than last year. So, and this, I have to give credit to Sarah and Anthony Gentile for going through it after I had originally proposed it, and they, Anthony said, you know, I'd like to take a look at this and look a little closer at where the numbers are. So the numbers that you have there, the seven-oh-two-five, the eight-seventy-five, the two-hundred, the one-oh-two, the one-hundred, that's under the non-salary. That's, really, I have to give credit to them for going through it and deciding that this makes better sense than how... That's, really, I have to give credit to them for going through it and deciding that this makes better sense than how it had been laid out. The only thing here is, and you're not showing it, there was, you may have something with a thousand dollar supplemental, and I believe that's been rescinded. That was for salary for the, well, stipend, rather. So I think we're sticking with the two thousand.
Can I ask what the, the seven thousand dollar radio budget, that seems, well, first off, we have, don't we have a centralized radio budget now with the new system?
I, you know what, I truly, I can't speak to that. I know that these are the ones that Anthony is responsible for relating to emergency, emergency preparedness. The other ones, whether or not they're out of the central with dispatch, with DPW or police, this doesn't reflect those, is my knowledge. These are other ones for emergency preparedness.
I'm just a little curious on the, the radio budget itself. Basically, the one-man department spends about what I do on a twenty-five-man department. So I'm a little curious what that entails, especially given a new, brand-new radio system. And I know all the state radios are supplemented by the Commonwealth.
I will get that, more information back to the committee.
Thank you.
That's all for emergency preparedness for now. Then finally, the celebrations, cultural, historical budget.
So I have a question on the Fourth of July parade, they accounted for that? So we didn't have a parade?
Right.
So we didn't get the money. So did it just?
I think it was appropriated.
By town article.
Right.
Okay. So it's just still sitting there as an appropriation?
Yes.
Okay.
So it should go back into free, next year's free cash figures?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because in theory, we'll be asking for it again this year.
Yeah, but we usually do that by warrant article.
Well, that's, again, that's a question that I had here to ask the.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't expended under this budget in FY thirteen or fourteen. Technically, it was a warrant article.
It was fifteen.
Or fifteen. No, but I'm, what I'm saying, that each year, we, for the last three years, it's been a warrant article, it hasn't been part of this budget.
Right.
So it should show up on their budget.
No. And it, and it doesn't either, does it?
Yeah, it's fair. It does, when I pulled together the, the original template that I provided, I had included it because it had been included in the budget when I pulled it down from the system, and then I figured out afterwards that it had been appropriated separately and that the rest of the budget was set, but that's where, on the system, the budget went, is to that line, to that department. So I'm not sure whether we want it to stay with the department and be included in its regular budget, or whether you want it as a separate article.
This is, this is the same. This is the same discussion we have every year.
Every year.
It's, it's kind of just a, a fundamental thing where, at least some of us, if not all of us on the committee.
Me and you?
Well, yeah, definitely me for one. We go around asking departments to, you know, to cut budgets and, and, you know, keep services. We're talking about a health agent we need to afford, an HR director we need to afford, all these things that we need so much. How can we, as a committee, go forward and recommend eighteen thousand dollars for, for a parade? Now, we know every year it's gonna get voted in, and I, I get that, but I just can't, I can't in good faith go to the townspeople and recommend we spend eighteen thousand dollars on a parade when we're not meeting all the needs of the community. Fully aware, regardless of what I recommend, it's gonna get voted in. But, so for that reason, we have left it in recent years to stand alone as a warrant article, to be voted on, and, and it goes with, it has gone in the last few years without this committee's recommendation.
So my question is then, why do we have a separate line from Memorial Day and Veterans' Day? Why wouldn't it be the same theory?
Well, those, those celebrations aren't just parade. There's other, correct, there's other disreals.
I wouldn't consider that quite as discretionary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do have a dumb, dumb question, a little one, but energy, do we, what is the, what are the gas, electricity, and oil, is that?
Those are costs associated with the Little Red Schoolhouse.
With the Little Red Schoolhouse?
Oh, that's right, yes.
Okay.
And we're running.
And are there, there rental fees that go in for that or something?
There, well.
Revolving fund, wasn't it?
There's a revolving fund, and I'm not sure.
I think we draw down every year.
But it had been static, as I recall, its use has been, yes.
I thought we were gonna get rid of that revolving fund.
Thinking of that, because it just isn't, it didn't use very much anymore, is it?
Can you check?
What would it be called?
Little Red Schoolhouse Revolving Fund?
Center School Revolving Fund.
That, that's not. Center School.
That's not.
You might wanna.
It wasn't approved last year, so if it was done properly, if it wasn't re-appropriated, then it would be gone. It would, it would have been.
And it's not, doesn't exist now?
I can confirm, but it shouldn't be. It should be in free cap, kind of fund.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get much use in?
Uh, you know, there hasn't been any, anyone who's come before the Board of Selectmen recently, now that you mention it. We, there was a time where there were, for about four or five, four-year period there, where there were two classes in particular, and they were both music for.
I mean, it's, don't shoot me, but is that something the town could sell?
The schoolhouse? I don't know the restrictions on it.
Do we have any use for it, or?
Other than historic, I mean, it's got historic significance to the.
It sits on town land. It's, or is it a matter of townspeople don't know that it's a resource available to them, some of it?
That might be an idea to promote it.
How big is it?
It's not very big.
Ten by ten meters?
We had a Rotary meeting, oh, it's small.
That's an intimate space.
It's about the size of this, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the parade? Now I'm confused. Is there a warrant article coming up this year with the parade in it or not?
Yes, we would.
And if not, does that mean it's back in our?
No, we will, we would be advising this board.
So there's still time to do more, another warrant.
And we do, there is a warrant item for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and just to end that subject, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, there are some people in town, I think that's a necessity also.
I'm sure they do. I'm not gonna lose sleep over the whole thing. I just can't, I just can't go before and recommend.
And the, you know, the, the image of the town.
So I will resubmit this with the funding taken out for the parade.
But into the warrant article.
And then the Selectmen will do the warrant article.
Yeah. One more question. What is the, now eight hundred dollars, used to be seven hundred and fifty for telephone? Do we have a celebration telephone?
We have a telephone up at the schoolhouse as well.
So we're paying eight hundred dollars a year for a telephone in a building that no one uses?
We are paying for a telephone at the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Okay. Something we might wanna think about. I mean, if no one's using the building, then today's age of cellphones, you know, I know it's only eight hundred dollars, but you know.
I love saying hundred dollars. Somebody's gonna be using the building, they just have to have a cellphone.
So the one.
And then I have one other.
Okay, I was, I was waiting, I was looking for it.
Yeah. Of course, I didn't bring it with me, I made copies, and they're sitting safely on my desk, I apologize. The last thing here is, and I will work from just this piece of paper, is the proposal for an HR department, or HR department, that's what it is. I had at the last meeting, had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen about that, and I put together a rough proposal for an HR department and rough numbers, proposing that there would be an H, one HR director and one full-time clerical at a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which elicited some strange looks from the Board of Selectmen.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, it, that's just an estimated cost, so a hundred and twenty thousand is what I put down for that. And then another ten thousand five hundred for office equipment, training, not only training for the department, but for employees, and then other supplies. So a proposal that will, that is, at this point, one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars, which is obviously a very significant amount of money, but that is what I presented to the board as a starting point for discussion.
Was your thought process to have that full-time admin staff, staff, the HR director, and the benefit person?
My, my thought was that these would be two new positions based on this, so there'd be an HR director and a full-time clerical dedicated to the HR director supporting those functions, and then the department as a whole. So the number, yes, would change, but the department would then include the benefits administration manager and also a half-time clerical that the benefits administration manager has currently. So, but for sake of clarity, as a new proposal, this is why I did it this way. I didn't include those others and take them out of the board's selectmen's office and so forth.
So I gotta ask the obvious question, where would you put them?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask the same question.
Uh, well, my, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
My, currently, there is a space that has been vacated by the IT department. And perhaps that could be space that could be used.
Oh, that's right, they've gone to the high school now, right?
Mm-hmm. There'd be four people if it was all funded, fully funded, four people in the office, or four workspaces in that area.
Actually, three, because the part-time person already is stationed in the Selectmen's office. The person who's half benefits and half Selectmen's office, she already has a desk in the Selectmen's office, so there wouldn't, there'd be no need to move her into that office.
But that's basically in the back of all four people, I believe, because when Ryan's office was back there.
There were six people in there.
There were six people, so, but that was tight.
But then again, that's a space that maybe you look at it and then try and reconfigure the, the Selectmen's office, and that office, and work on the flow of it. I mean, I can't visualize it, but there, to me, there is.
There's some square footage available that you liked.
Do you know how much square footage? I was in there one time, and it didn't look like there was a lot of square footage in that area, especially with all the equipment.
It's amazing when they took all that, the desks out and everything, 'cause they went in there to clean the floors and do some wiring.
Yeah, let's go. So a question that lends itself to what you just talked about, space. So Board of Public Works came in, and they talked to us about their plan for town hall. And then I reported to this board that I received a call from John Mayberry, a week ago or ten days ago, that the Board of Public Works was going to submit a warrant article for renovations at town hall, and Jim essentially told us that it was gonna be for the full amount. And we had discussions last week about, if you're gonna do it over three years, why go for the whole amount in the beginning with a warrant article? John said that they were submitting it because, I guess, there was some plan to have both Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works jointly submit a warrant article.
For the full amount?
Well, I don't know, a warrant article for town hall renovations, so, but he had not yet heard, I guess, and they were gonna be submitting the warrant article. So they did submit a warrant article?
They did.
They submitted it for seven hundred and something thousand dollars.
From where? How are they planning, from where?
I haven't seen the warrant article. Let's do.
I sent the copy of it to everybody.
But there was no method of payment?
I'm not sure, I didn't, I don't recall that part.
No. So I guess, my question was, didn't, wasn't that a capital planning item?
It is on capital.
And it's still on the capital planning?
Okay.
Uh, the, I'm sorry. But, yeah, that, I mean, that, that's where we're confused. That, that's the dysfunction junction here. It's a request of a capital planning.
Right, 'cause that was brought to us.
And then we have a warrant article. The warrant articles for the whole seven hundred something thousand.
Before you write.
Mr. Carabetta's committee presented to us last week their recommendations. We kind of vetted it, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but we were kind of thinking, why not do, you know, over three years?
Well, that's what they planned originally. That was the original, that was the plan that we got.
So I guess, where are your discussions with them, and support for the article versus capital planning? Can you kind of give us some guidance on that?
Well, we haven't had any discussions lately. The last discussions we had was that this was gonna be a three-year project. And we knew what the total value was, but I, I, I mean, I know there were discussions about asking for the whole amount, but explaining that it's only gonna, it's gonna be spaced out over three years. So I haven't actually read their warrant item, but I don't, that's what they, if that's the way they worded it. They worded it such a way that they asked, asked for the total amount and then explained that it would be spent over three years.
I mean, the elevator part of it is, is over three hundred thousand, and their intent is not to do that project.
This year.
This year.
This year. Physically, they're not gonna do it.
Right, not this year, yeah.
They're gonna have someone else put it out to bid and do it. That's, that's my understanding.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're not.
They're not gonna do the physical.
Well, they're not.
What I'm telling you is it's three hundred, it was like three hundred and five thousand dollars. It's over, you know, it's almost half the, the amount of money. When that happens, you're gonna need the three hundred and five thousand, because the contractor's gonna wanna contract, and the deal's gotta be done, and the money's gotta be available at that particular time. So in one shot, there's gonna be three hundred plus thousand. It's gotta be ready.
So they come, I, I don't know what.
Well, the capital planning committee advised them to go for the whole amount, rather than piecemeal it, like we have with other projects that have passed, where you keep coming back year after year after year for more, for more money. Put it all out there and ask for it at one time. That's what the capital planning committee recommended.
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I don't know how you feel, Mr. Chairman, but it's not really pertinent to the budget items that we're talking about tonight, and when we get into discussions on the warrant articles, we can have, certainly have this discussion with the board at that time. But we're, we're getting way off track of the, of the, the budget items tonight, and we do have a full agenda. Thanks for that, Russ.
Well, anytime, anytime.
Payback, right?
Are we still on the last item?
Yes, we are.
So the proposal for the Human Resources Department, I guess my, my first thought when you said that is, it's now March tenth, and we, you know, it's almost like, and, and this is an opening proposal, so is your intention to flush that out over the course of this year and bring back a, a fully, you know, cooked proposal for next budget year? Or are you, are you hoping to try to squish something in this for FY sixteen? I guess I'm a little confused, 'cause it's kinda late, late in the process. Well, you know, it's like, for lack of a more intelligent way of putting it, you know, we sit here, we have these ideas, and it's like bringing them to the teacher. And you guys tell us, can we do it, can't we do it? I mean, let me ask you, what, what's the budget look like from the state?
It's pretty much level fund. There's a little increase, like seventy thousand dollars or something like that, overall, which includes chapter seventy increase. So it's pretty much level fund. The, the governance budget you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you'll see those numbers when we go over it tonight.
Okay, 'cause that's, you know, obviously, in a sense, we're hamstrung, 'cause we don't know, we get all these ideas, we can do things, and then we don't know what the budget's gonna hold. We can bring them to you. I don't, I don't think we had intended to bring this up for this fiscal year. I mean, there's, there's, in my opinion, we can tweak that, because we already have a benefits coordinator, so we can do things where we don't need a full-time, you know, four people in the office, but that's just my opinion. I mean, Nick's done a great job putting this together, I don't wanna diminish what he's done, but in, in, in tight budget circumstances, I think there's a way, there's ways we can do that at less, you know, smaller dollar amount. But I'm not gonna, you know, I, that's just my opinion. I don't know if my fellow board members can, you know, obviously chime in, I'm blabbing here.
Well, I'll just say very quickly, yes, I did wanna see some sort of HR component happen this year. However, the dollar amount that's proposed was a little bit steep for me. And I've said that to you, we've had that discussion.
So when can, on all of these, including the HR, when can we expect some, something from the board that these are what we're supporting? These are what we're, so, I mean, we're looking at the, the HR position, we're looking at the health administrator, Board of Health Person, Inspector.
Health Agent.
Yeah, Agent, the brain wasn't working.
That's all right.
Dog Officer, I think you said you already voted on, right? Okay, so that one you're already supporting. Okay, so that one you're already supporting. But in terms of the others, because to be honest with you, we're not gonna go hard to work at it if it's, if an item isn't being supported or presented by the board as, as a priority.
Well, in my own opinion, I think a health agent would be priority one, so we don't get in trouble.
Any other changes that have to be made? Can those be done by Tuesday?
That would be, I, I would at least bring it up to the board to have that discussion on Tuesday, to see if you, if you can come to some agreement.
Okay. So, we may have answers for you Tuesday.
Okay. Okay. That would be great, because if we go too much past that, we're really hitting the, hitting wire, so.
Yeah, we, we, we got that before. Is there any way you can get the state to do their budget in October?
Yeah, good luck with that. Actually, it was just later this year, because of a new governor.
No, I know.
You know, that threw an extra thirty days on top of everything, so.
The old governor had to go get his seventy-five-hundred-award-a-day job with the Olympic Committee.
Yeah, I know, jealous.
I know.
Wonder if I'll be as successful in my retirement, so. Okay, that in on the budget items?
That's all I have for the budgets.
Okay, great. So, kind of what I wanted to, to go over next is the budget overview. Now, I presented this to this committee last week. So, what we're gonna kind of get into now is a, is a concept. It's not, at this point, being advocated by the committee. In fact, we threw it out there, there was a lot of discussion last week. So, the committee's taken no vote on this or anything else. I'm throwing this out as a concept, and bear in mind that all these numbers were prior to your presentation here tonight. So, Sarah, if you wanna bring that up?
Should be, no one wants to.
He knows how to do everything.
I couldn't do any of this. He's younger than I am, so he, more technology.
That's why, that's why the IT director is there. Should be a big role in there for the director.
Push two buttons.
No, we just, we left it.
But we'll try the arm button.
That's highly overrated.
We'll take it for a second.
There we go. We're, we're starting. Yeah, it's, it's just, it takes a minute to warm up.
Who's this?
No source, yes, correct. I wanted to get to this right after the mission.
Bones heard any of us.
Not me too long.
Okay.
I could read it.
So, I'm gonna kind of stand up here and, so, in developing the budget, there's, we expressed to you some, some concerns that we had over the ever-increasing tax rate at our, at our last time we got together. So, Sarah and I kind of went to work and tried to see what we could do to, to reduce that potential tax rate for next year. At the same time, some of the objectives that we need to meet are, we wanted to keep the department whole. In other words, we didn't wanna recommend reduction in services, essentially. We needed to cover the snow and ice deficit, which is gonna be pretty significant this year, as we all know. We wanted to maintain our reserves at, at or around six percent. And we wanted to move our, keep, continue with the thought process of this committee to move ourselves forward in the, in the development of budgets, a complete budget, without any reliance on free cash, on the use of reserves to maintain a balanced budget. So, what we've kind of come up with, kind of splits the difference between maintaining a, the current tax rate of twenty dollars and seventy-two cents and not going up with, I've forgotten what was proposed, was.
Twenty-one sixty-six.
Twenty-one sixty-six, right, was, was the potential. So, we did that. Some of the very small amount helped with the governor's budget, and if you slide up, Sarah, and we'll go into... So, our, here, this is all of our revenues, this, this top half. And essentially, what we were waiting on was the chapter seventy lottery and other state aid, those numbers there. And you can see that overall, we're at about a one percent increase. It's not, not big money. So, let's go over to the uses. So, really, we're not making it up in revenues?
Why did local receipts go down five percent? I know it says C tab, but it's a true and accurate.
Let's just say accurate accounting.
Okay, all right.
So, the top, the first area that we impacted was normally we appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the reserve fund. As we all know, the reserve fund is kind of an emergency fund when things happen throughout the fiscal year that have to be dealt with rather swiftly, you can't wait for town meeting, you know, or totally unexpected, you know, fire truck needs a new engine, or something like that. Then this is the money that we go back to. It requires your board's approval and the appropriations committee approval to be expended. So, we reduced that by fifty thousand dollars and would appropriate two hundred thousand. Going down to the health insurance, we got a lot of help here in that the trust voted to maintain level, level fee, service, same service for the same fees, in other words, for the incoming fiscal year. There is a small increase still represented here, because we do anticipate, and history has demonstrated, that we see an increase every year during open enrollment. We have more people come on, and we need to, we need to have some money there to handle that. So, our original budget calculations were about a six percent increase in this area. Now, we're looking at about a one percent. So, that's a significant savings there. Go down to the only budget here, the only, the only budget that has the potential for collective bargaining issues that's been included in this is the schools. And that's for two reasons. One, they have a tentative agreement. And two, it's certainly the biggest nut that we have to deal with in the town. So, that's included in, in that. The rest of any collective bargaining agreements or raises are not included in this budget, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. Then down to the snow and ice deficit, we put in two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for next fiscal year, for this fiscal year, snow and ice deficit, which we're allowed to. The other balance of that, we do anticipate more snow and ice deficit this year than two hundred and twenty-five. The remaining of that, we anticipate being able to utilize end-of-year transfers to cover it. So, two hundred and twenty-five would be carried into next year. Funding, OPEB, our, our, excuse me, our committee's calcul, initial calculations for, for FY sixteen was to increase that to a hundred thousand dollars. We've knocked it back down to last fiscal year's money, keep it the same. And then finally, the capital projects. We were hoping this year to be able to go to a new system where essentially, two percent of the department's budget, I mean, the department, the town's budget would be allocated toward capital improvements. That's a big jump, considering it went from zero percent to two percent. So, we've knocked that down to one point five this year. We would recommend bringing the balance up to keep that to the whole amount of roughly one point one, was it, Rocco?
Yes.
Yeah, one point one in capital, using free cash, this, this year only. Again, remembering that capitals are one-time expenses and not reoccurring. Next fiscal year, we would go the other half a percent, so that we're back up to a balanced budget. Go ahead, Sarah, now. That brought us to twenty-one seventeen versus twenty-one sixty-six in the potential tax rate. So, it's kind of a halfway. Now, there is the issue of the outstanding cut. Incidentally, what, that, that covers the snow and ice deficit, it maintains our reserves at about six percent, moves us toward that capital, it met all of our objectives, and it kept all the department holes, all the remaining departments whole. The one issue that's not covered in here is any collective bargaining agreements or raises, and we would anticipate that the balance of those could be funded with the increased revenues, hopefully through the meals tax, as well as efficiencies found in the various health insurances that the board's looking at and working on currently. So, we can conceivably keep a cap, if you will, on the tax rate.
And achieve your objectives.
And achieve the objectives. It doesn't, however, achieve any of your objectives if the board's to adopt all of those, because those are kind of new information to this budget tonight. And quite frankly, with the exception of one department, it doesn't fund any of the supplementals.
More warrant, warrant articles either.
Well, warrant articles typically aren't, oh, yeah, they can be raised and appropriated. Yeah, you're right. You're right. I don't think we have knowledge of any raise and appropriate that we're not aware of, but you're right.
We got the town hall, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Well, we don't even know where they're recommending funding that from.
I know, I'm just saying, it's gotta come from somewhere, if, you know, if that's a, an article on warrant.
Well, let's leave it for a second, see what, thoughts?
As far as that one, I'll get some idea from them, what they're thinking.
Well, if they're, I mean, if you're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of raising appropriate, you're looking at a two and a half override. There's no way the budget can absorb it without reductions in other budgets.
And I don't think that's what they're looking for. At least, that's not the way it was proposed to us, or the way it was discussed with us, so. I mean, I see, obviously, from what Rocco said, I, I see the intent of, as with, and this, that, and the other, my example's not gonna be really good, because it was sort of an accidental thing with the pool. You go to the town for X amount of dollars, and you go to the town for X amount of dollars. So, in, in effect, it's better to go to them and say, this project's gonna cost seven hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna be over three years. So, in effect, the first phase will be X amount, but we wanna come and, we wanna come and make you aware of the tot, of the total amount, so, you know, so there's no surprises down the road, as opposed to coming to every year piecemeal and saying, oh, this is what we need this year, we need an elevator this year, you know. So, I can see why they're doing it the way they're doing it, but I just wanna make sure that they understand that, obviously, the, the purpose is not for them to have seven hundred some thousand dollars, you know, on, on May twentieth, or whatever the town meeting is, so. So, I will talk to them about that, and if we have to get them in front of us, you know, to just clarify things, we have to do that.
I think the, the first question, as it relates just to that, that town hall, is, does that whole project have the board's support? I mean, if you guys aren't behind it, if your objective is that regardless of, if, if your thoughts are, let's, let's not throw seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars if it's not gonna solve the problems, then I can't see us supporting it.
Right.
I can't speak for the whole committee. I can't see myself reporting the support.
That was the question I had.
The town's already spent tens of thousands of dollars for studies on that building, all of which said the building is not adequate for the future of the town. Our last study alone has said that it's okay for now, but all the office spaces certainly doesn't meet the standards of today, or cannot house any more people, HR people, health inspectors, their assistants, secretaries, what have you. The building is just not suitable for the town's future. But, you know, that's my personal opinion. If, you know, the Board of Selectmen endorses that, and the Board of Public Works goes forward with it, it's up to the townspeople.
Well, that's ultimately, yeah.
Sarah, ask the Board of Selectmen, are you in favor of the Board of Public Works' plan to renovate the town hall?
Well, when we voted, when we first voted on that, there was the problem with the IT department. That has since been solved, so it is a different set of circumstances now than when we originally voted to support it, so.
The Board of Selectmen did consider this as part of the capital planning process and did send notice to the capital planning committee that they supported the plan.
They did.
Okay, so it is supported then by the board.
You know, it's funny, but not the delay really, but we talked about the studies, well, one of those studies where the group suggested adding two thousand square feet to the town hall at a cost of some phenomenal amount of money. I mean, that, that, some of the.
Some of the previous studies.
Are just as far-fetched as what, you know.
That's exactly right.
And the way this was presented to us by the, by the Board of Public Works, it seemed like, you know, it, it's something that was doable, it would, it would increase, it would increase the, you know, the electrical, the, all the infrastructure-type things, it would add the elevator, it would make it ADA-compatible, the bathrooms, and, and would bring it up to where it would support.
All of which would support what the town needs today, when we're looking to the future.
Well, I mean, in theory, you're looking to the future, I mean, as you were talking about with Tom, at some point, there's gonna be a lot more things done online. There's gonna, you know, you, in, in a perfect world, you're getting to the point where you're gonna need fewer people rather than more, because you're gonna be able to go online and do a lot of things that you have to go into town hall now to do. So, I, and this is my opinion, and maybe, you know, maybe fantasy island, but I think, I, I don't think ten years down the road, we're gonna need fifteen more people in town hall, because we have, you know, five thousand more people in town, I guess. But if you look at efficiencies.
You just, you're in here looking for a full-time health agent.
Right.
Which I believe that, you know, you weren't looking for admin staff, and then an HR department with another person, and, you know, we added a benefits administrator with it and admin staff. So, it's, it's not getting, and the complexities and the regulations and the so forth are requiring more, not less.
Right.
Funding mandates.
So, but I agree, the number of people coming in and out of town hall. Right.
The concept is to reduce that and get more people on.
Right.
But just the complexities.
Right, and, and some of the things you proposed can probably be done on a smaller scale and get the same effect, you know. But I still think, like I said, I don't think you're gonna need more, you know, I think the efficiencies are there, just in technology and things, that you're not gonna need. The type, the, the amount of people you're gonna need going forward is less than you would need twenty years ago to, to perform the same services. That's just my thought, you know, I, you know.
So, having said on this point long enough to see the different studies done, for one thing, we have to come to code on this building.
Right.
I mean, that in and of itself is a, is a major expense.
That's part of, that's, yeah, that's part of the.
Well, the suppression system and the electrical account for a lot of that, seven fifty.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have to get that going and get it fixed.
Well, that's the thing, the first, I believe, and Rocky, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the first year's costs, as it was presented to us, are mainly that, you know, getting things.
The electrical upgrade.
Exactly, yeah, to get, yeah, so.
Okay. So, as it relates to the budget, I know, I don't know if the board's had any opportunity to have any discussion on that, and, I mean, there's, kind of the way I see it, there's three ways we can go. We could work real hard to maintain something close to the current tax rate. We could split the difference as something like I proposed here. We could go out, tax to the max levy, and fund a lot of the things and bring ourselves closer. I, I, this committee hasn't fully vetted it out where we wanna go with the whole thing at this point, so I, I guess, but I think the one thing we do all agree on is your input will have an impact on our recommendations. So, you know, we appreciate the conversation.
Now, let me ask you, if you don't mind, you know, we're talking about amending the healthcare coverage for employees and whatnot, and. And, you know, obviously don't have, we don't know what the dollar amounts will be technically. So that's not reflected anywhere in here. So if we find out after meeting with the different groups, you know, union groups, town employee groups, that, that we're going to save, I don't know, $150,000, $200,000, obviously that's going to be something that, if it gets implemented in the relatively near future, that, that's going to be a positive towards, you know, and that may help to fund something that we're talking about in the future, like, you know, like an HR person or, you know, so.
Understanding though, that a portion of all that, depending upon the outcome of your collective bargaining agreements, will be absorbed through that.
Right, well, yes, exactly, yeah.
Same thing, all, all of those combined, the health insurance, the, the meals tax, I mean, all those together, if you guys all sign contracts and absorb all of that, well, we're going, we'll run you all out of town, but. But a portion of what we're talking about will likely be absorbed in your collective bargaining agreements, yeah.
But didn't you give us a rough estimate, it'd be about 210,000 at one time?
On the meals tax? Yes.
Yeah.
Actually, the state provided that estimate. The state was able to say, this is what you're missing out on.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't recognize the whole 100 first year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a three-month lag?
There is, yeah.
They get their interest on it and they finally give it the.
You don't recognize all of your health insurance savings the first year.
I realize that, but, but it's a target, you know what I mean? I mean, obviously, we know there's other departments in, in town who remain nameless, who'll be looking for a new high school. So, so obviously that's going to come up. So that's another, that's another factor in your, in your.
It is.
In your tax rate, is you can't get to the point where, that, you know, that can't be done if, in fact, the townspeople want it to be done, you know.
Myself, Eric, I'm all for trying to maintain the tax rate wherever I'm right now.
You realize that we couldn't do that without a reduction in services?
Yes. Yep.
So that would be a hit.
$700,000.
Yeah, a round figure of about $700,000, you know, in reductions.
Because I think the general consensus of the public, they're sick of the taxes going up.
So can I just?
Well, the only thing I would add to that, and trust me, I'm the one on this board advocating for, you know, keeping that tax rate level. But when you, when you talk to the people in terms of the, the tax rate going up, you have to also have the same conversation in terms of the services. Because they, they got to understand they're related and no one wants their taxes to go up. But no one also wants a loss of services.
But what I tell them, when I talk to them, you can't go to the town meeting and shake your head yes to everything because, and I'm going to tell you people the truth, when you go there, you don't know how to shake your head no. And if you don't want your taxes going up, you get, your head got to go the other way.
I, I'll warn you that the other hazard that exists from doing that, and this is, this is something that you, something that takes some thought. But if we were not, let's just, for the sake of argument, say we didn't raise the tax rate at all. We, we taxed to the same levy amount that we are in the current fiscal year. We don't lose that potential for that capacity. We can take it back actually the next year, but the increase in taxes would be enormous. So if you, at any point, feel that you want to grow the budget and that you're better off doing it incrementally, I guess that's probably why I'm feeling like some halfway measurement. Let's keep it from the full growth, but let's not grow it. We got to grow it some. I think you, you just have to, because if you, at some point, we'll, we'll, if we go back in, in tax to the max levy capacity, people's taxes would go up an enormous amount in that given year. So that's, that's, it's got to come into the conversation.
Yeah.
That potential.
So just kind of, just put some rough numbers on it. So I think you said, keep the rate the same. It's cutting about $700,000.
Right.
So if you just use the general numbers of kind of departments, that essentially means you're cutting 350,000 from the schools, just usually hypotheticals. You're cutting probably 50 to 60,000 from the police. You're cutting 50 or 60,000 from DPW. And then you're going into, you know, fire and some of the, then small library and some of the smaller departments. So you will have, and the only place to really cut, because 70 to 75% of all the expenses are personnel, you're reducing the number of people that are beyond the town payroll, period. Just so that everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, your fixed costs are your fixed costs. You can't change that.
Oh, you can't change electricity or?
Right, that, that's, that 700 or 750 might be tempered a little bit with some of the changes in the health insurance now that have come on. So don't take that 700 to the bank. It would be a sizable number. But that 700 was an early estimate and some of these calculations have changed. Things like the local aid as well as the, the health insurance. We're no longer figuring a 6%, we're now figuring a 1% increase. That's a significant savings right there. So there are some other factors that come into it. But the, I think the point that Russ is making is a legitimate one. That's, that's, I think, why I propose, I don't know if it's a proposal. It's why I'm showing you this tonight. There's the potential for us to keep it from growing a huge amount. But I think it's also in our best interest to grow it a little bit. Just like your income, you know, does well, your household budget does well when your income grows at least a little bit every year. It's no different with the town. You know, with their budget grows at least a little bit to, to maintain the pace of inflation and the cost of doing business.
Mine grows very little, I'm retired.
So you're talking about 45 cents by the.
Per, per thousand. So 200,000 dollars, only it's $90.
Significant, about half of what the potential is, round figures for this year. So just something to chew on and definitely we're, we're interested in your input and feedback on that. Because like I've been saying to every board and you guys, I, you know, it's got to be a community discussion, you know.
But just, just because while we're on health act, to the other elected boards who might be watching, in December, this committee asked for feedback from all elected boards. And the only feedback we've had is from your board. We haven't heard from the school committee on whether they would like to see a lower tax rate. We haven't heard from DPW whether they'd like to see a lower tax rate. We haven't heard from, I mean, we've heard from the school committee, they presented a very compelling argument on their budget. But, you know, it's, we're kind of all in this together.
We certainly are.
So. Well, we're all affected by any, any changes, positive or negative, to the budget. So it's in everybody's best interest to work together as opposed to going, I want this, I want this, that, and everybody else.
And each board does a good job advocating for their department and, you know, putting forward some.
Well, it's our job.
Some excellent data, you know, but, but when it gets right down to it, you're the ones who set the tax rate, so.
You know, in a perfect world, you know, you'd want great services and, you know, I mean.
And low taxes, yeah.
Back in the fall, I went to a friend's house, I was in down in Naples, Florida. And I'm driving around going, man, it must be a blast with all these $20 million houses to play with this budget if you're getting services for the town, for the, for the city, you know. I mean, it's, the, the tax, you know, the tax funds and everything must be great, you know, so.
I'm not sure about that region, but a lot of them are, do it by county.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Education, fire services, police services, all those are county running, so, yeah.
Killing my idea of retiring, going down there running for.
County commissioner.
There you go, yeah. Those are the corrupt guys.
So there is a article on the warrant for the meals tax.
Yes.
We were good boys and girls.
I promise, Rock, I wouldn't do this. I will. So the next question is, is, yes, I, is on the employee health insurance changes?
It's actually, they have already set the wheels in motion. They answered that at their last meeting.
I know, but I'm wondering whether the wheels will be completed by July 1st so that we could recognize a certain amount of money.
The, the first meeting of the Public Employee Committee is tomorrow afternoon. There's a possibility that out of 30 days, we may need seven.
Okay, good.
And the last item, obviously, is whether we have any resolution on the last sticky item of the elected officials' health insurance.
Do I have to leave?
No, we're just asking if there's any resolution, we're not.
I believe.
Yes, we have put through a warrant article, request for a warrant article for it to increase to 100%.
So still offered, but at 100% paid by the.
Right, so that way the employees and, and we did not include part-time at this time and they felt it was best just to stick with, with the issue at hand, and that was the elected officials. And so for them to pay 100% and the retire, and also once they were to retire, if they, for some reason they became eligible, they would still pay the 100%.
Is that too? I was watching your discussion. So does that need to go to the state legislature for passage?
Yeah, and the steps that we would have to go to, have a warrant first, and then after the warrant was approved, then it would go to the, our state legislators who have already been placed on, on notice and are willing to sign off on that.
And what requires it to go to the state legislature, the 100% contribution?
Just the, actually, I'm not sure of that. I was told that what the process was, I was told the process was that you had to get a warrant article and then go to your legislator to have them, them voted.
Is it a warrant article because, because you voted one to one?
No, we voted.
No, they agreed on, on actually eliminating it.
We did not vote on eliminating it. We voted on, that was the compromise, to be able to still supply the, the benefit to the elected officials.
Because it'll give them a group rate, so.
And it'll give them a group rate, so they're still realizing some savings.
Because I'm confused, because two years ago, Long Meadows Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Voted to.
The Board of Selectmen does have the right to eliminate it altogether. However, for changing the 100, the percentage, you do need to go through that process. We, my understanding was, the problem was the liability for the town. The, it being so unpredictable with, right now, I believe it's $72,000 for eight employees participating, and we have up to 20 or 21 that could.
Or the potential, yeah.
Potential, potentially participate. By increasing the, the percentage that they would be paying to 100%, that eliminates and it addresses your problem, our problem of being the town's, that's why I said our problem. I meant our, all of us, the town's problem of being vulnerable. And I, you know, I feel, I do feel, I would make a nice statement, that that is a happy medium. Some people do not feel that way. And so we just wanted to get rid of the risk to the town.
Was there a decision made not to pursue the retired, part-time elected officials' health insurance?
My understanding is that there is nothing that we can do with the, the current retirees, that the retired, that's a, pretty much a done deal.
Did you hear a legal ruling?
I, we spoke with our attorney and our, and he advised us that there was nothing that we could do with.
But if there's something like, if there was something, I'd do it.
Are you hearing something different?
No, 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 I just, it was just interesting, I knew there were more than eight individuals, that's all. I'm just questioning, that's all.
More than eight individuals.
Who, who were part-time elected officials receiving health insurance.
Well, I heard there was only eight that are receiving it.
Active.
Active, active.
There's three retirees.
Right.
And four that are getting it for life.
Is it four or three?
Four.
And what's the percentage that the, that they're paying now?
70, 30, 70, 30.
They're paying 30%, the town is paying 70.
So they're going to triple what they're paying.
Or.
Or they're going to pay 100%.
They're going to pay 100%, but the.
They're going to triple what they're paying?
That, it is.
If they're paying 30% now?
A little bit more than that.
On one of the days.
But here's the thing, as opposed to having nothing, either, you, right now, if you pay the 100%, you still get the discounted rate, as a, the group rate, as opposed to getting nothing. Because if we eliminate it altogether to, I saw it as there were two ways of eliminating the town's liability. Either you have them pay 100% or you eliminate it. So by paying the 100%, the import, the elected official does still get the benefit of the insurance if they choose to have, to have it. And they're getting that group discounted rate as opposed to having to go and find it themselves. Or if they, if we were to eliminate it altogether, the town would still be good and there would be nothing, no, no benefit to the elected official.
And I thought that was one of the arguments to maintain the current situation as it is because it was a bonus, if you will, for the elected officials rather than either increasing their pay. It was, it was to draw more people into the elected population, if you will. And now if you triple their insurance, is that going to minimize or reduce the quality of people that will be running for election?
I know, because I, I can say to the fact right now, we have nobody running against anybody and we're still getting the insurance now. And me and Angela ran and we, neither one of us have the insurance.
That's a pretty valid point.
So I don't think it's going to bring better people or more people because nobody ran this time.
True, but I'm thinking that.
Everybody's unopposed.
If we had done this in October, there might be people that are running that wouldn't run. Not myself, but I just told my wife she has to work till she's 80 because you can get a group plan over there.
You can always go on the exchange, don't forget that.
That's right.
So I, I just have five minutes worth of business left with this committee, but we're done. You're welcome to stay, but thank you very much.
We appreciate the offer. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the selectman's meeting.
You're not going to have any more questions for us then?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so you're going to close, go ahead and close it now.
Is there a second?
I, I moved it.
All right, he moved it.
Oh, okay, whatever, it's, I'll second it for sure.
All favor?
Yes.
All right.
What, no conversation?
No. I don't allow adjournments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.